Good afternoon, this is the Athens City Planning Commission. Today is the 18th of September, we're meeting at about 12:06. And we have a quorum, three members are present. First of all, I'd like to ask to dispose of the minutes. Oh, I first have to do the oath.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody who's wishing to speak, would you please rise or say? I guess lawyers too. You're sure you're not going to speak, huh? It's probably, it won't, it'll be painless.
I'm not supposed to do this.
Well, if you have a case before us, we may well be speaking to you. Do you swear to tell the truth as you see it?
Great.
I try to replicate what they usually do. All right, now we're going to dispose of the minutes. Are there any issues with the minutes?
There were a couple typos that I just cast on to Shaw.
Good.
But nothing suspicious?
No.
Okay. I move we accept the minutes. Go ahead.
I said Paul versus Falla, kind of thing happens all the time.
Okay. I move we accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voluntarily?
Aye.
The minutes are approved as read.
Okay.
Our first case is 1410 Family Oxygen, 411 West Union Street, a lot split. And I was going to, at this point, ask Mr. Paskey to walk us through.
I hope to do that.
The lot split.
You may remember, Nancy, I think you were here then, we did a Title 41 on the Family Oxygen property on East Union, or West Union, a couple years ago. And at the time, the building was supposed to be the Family Oxygen one part, and then they were supposed to build a, to be occupied later part to the building. That part never got built, so therefore it didn't have to be a Title 41, even though they went through that process. Well, now that part maybe, or is proposed, somebody's wanting to build there, but they're wanting to make a separate parcel. So, splitting the lot, it meets all the ball controls. The only requirements that myself and Andy Stone, Director of Engineering Public Works, placed on this, and they do have it included in the deed description here, is that we have a shared access easement, so we don't have another curb cut right there across from the ODOT building, that they, the existing building and the proposed lot building would have its own, or such, shared entrance. And also, the lift station that is there was designed to accommodate two structures, but now that it's a separate parcel, we want to make sure we have an easement going to that lift station from the new parcel to the current lift station, so that sanitary will tie into that as well. And both of them have been noted in our, I wouldn't say recorded, but they are in the deed description as presented to us. So, they have, they have done what we asked them to do on that.
Okay.
Question, the lift station, is that ours, or is that?
It's theirs.
It's theirs.
It's private.
And therefore, combined two of them, they'll have to have an agreement between each other for the, for the actual maintenance of the lift station?
That is correct.
Okay. And I understand the reasons for strict access, that's technically starting a state route?
Yeah.
56. Okay.
And how will that be accomplished, that agreement for maintenance? Will they do it privately?
Well, that'll be a private maintenance agreement, yes. There's, Andy can speak better to this, it's, and actually, I have an engineer here, Ryan, what's it called, PTI?
Yeah.
Permit to install.
Will be required for, I think, from this, from, so that's something Andy can answer more about, but yes, we'll make sure that's.
Would it be attached to the deed, or what would, how would you do that?
Actually, we can require that when they, when the proposed building comes in to be built, that'll probably go through either a Title 41, unless it's not 5,000 square foot, but maybe we still do an open communication, and at the time, it's the middle of that, we'll make sure something's in there at that time, for the building. Right now, there's no building being proposed yet, so.
Okay.
All we can do right now is require the easement.
No building, no sewage, right?
Yeah, right.
There you go. All right.
And now that usually, when there's sewer problems, people resolve it pretty quickly. They usually have to.
Yes.
But we'll have to have some sort of agreement, so that we don't have what Andy typically refers to as the Days Inn situation, again, where, let's say, don't overhope that happens, the Family Oxygen goes out of business, or doesn't pay their electric bill, and the power is shut off, now the lift station's not working for the party next door. So, there has to be an agreement made that, that that is resolved, that it somehow, the lift station remains operational if the primary operator, for some reason, was to not pay the bill, or go out of business, or whatever it may be.
Or change of ownership, or somebody doesn't know.
Whatever it may be, we need to make sure that that lift station remains operational through transition.
It would seem that having it on the deed is just a little precaution to protect the risk years.
It is on the deed as far as the easement, but not the actual, not the actual agreement.
I don't know if we'd have to put it there, but it just may be a reference to it. In a, in a decade, I think of how many things get lost in the paper realm. I mean, things appear that you don't believe in, that you can see, and then the other side of it is, where did that go?
Right.
What happened here?
I can, I can ask Andy about that, maybe we make a condition of that some sort of agreement be attached to this.
And we have no other example of this, other than Days Inn?
I wouldn't say no, but.
We do have, lift stations out there, we have some shared, I think actually over at University Estates is a few, or used, or, no, I think he developed, he required everybody to have an individual one for some of those lots.
Okay.
But it, there's always a question of, you know, making sure everybody talks to each other.
Residential versus a commercial, that might be, well, anyway.
So, that's a forced main on this one, is another reason, we don't want multiple lift stations. You want to try to tie everything into a private, and then into the forced main.
Because you need that pressure.
Just is the property to be sold then, so they'll have separate owners, is that the understanding there?
See, it's a good thing you got the floor.
They can nod, truthfully.
Can you read Andy's comments since we can't?
Yes. I'll give best, I can. It says, "require common access easement tied to both parcels, needs sewer easement across original parcel granted to new parcel, needs to be in recorded legal description," which it is.
Okay.
The easement, yeah.
It's the first time I've heard this language, but I like it, reciprocal ingress easement. Just use that.
Oh, you mean actually on the deed itself?
And they also seem to have an A and P, no, call them the gaps.
Easement going through, yeah.
And the sanitary easement.
Okay. Have any other questions? Anything you'd like to say? Can't swear, waste that swearing. All right, so I have a motion for the lot split.
I move we accept the lot split with the conditions that have been provided, and cognizant of the lift station issue.
Any second.
Second.
Am I in favor?
Aye.
It's done, it's going on to city council.
Actually, it doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to?
No variances.
No variances.
Variances? Okay. Even better. Thank you. The next thing is University Estates Surgical Center, title 41. John Paskey, do you have anything to say?
Well, I'm going to let the engineer, Ryan Buckley, is here to speak on behalf of this, but I'll give you an introduction to it. Last meeting, we did a lot split on this very parcel. It's the first lot on the left-hand side going into University Estates, and one of the two parcels is the Surgical Center, Surge Center they call it, Surge Center Development, for a doctor's office to be built onsite. The only comments that I have, that I spoke with Andy about last night, is the, and I just spoke with Ryan briefly a minute ago, is the water line is not indicated properly on the, his drawings that he's given to us, and Andy's going to require that the water line currently stops, and Ryan's going to share some drawings with you in a second, but on the northwest, excuse me, northeast corner, Andy's requiring that it comes down to the southeast corner. So, it's an extension of the current, existing eight-inch line that is there, gets extended to the front of the building, or across from the building, so that the southernmost parcel of the lot split that we did will have water in the future. Also, there is currently a two-inch line running across the parcel somewhere, I don't have it on here, Andy knows it.
Oops.
That's actually feeding our lift station, that Dr. Connor put in years ago, that it's, it's a maintenance line that feeds our lift station out there, that runs through the property, so Andy's requiring that an easement be, excuse me, written in on that. We should have probably have caught all this prior to the lot split last time, but just discovered it yesterday, so. In light of that, I've already spoke with Ryan, and he has no problems with getting it included in there.
Well, thank goodness for Title 41.
Yeah.
Question, so, being aware of this line, that goes right, two-inch line that goes through the property, would this impact anything that gets built on top of it? Will we be looking down the road and say, there's a building on top of it?
Their requirement will be that they cannot build on top of the easement, or they relocate the two-inch line.
Okay.
Which is not hard to do, they can put it around the building, whatever it may be. Worry about that, I guess, when the day comes, that if they want to build on the southernmost parcel. It's not, on the current parcel, I do not believe it goes through that parcel, the Surgical Center parcel.
Okay.
It's the southernmost property, from the way Andy described it to me.
And we're at the communication stage, and not the submission?
This is communication stage, but Andy's done his internal review, the drawings are adequate enough that I have them on the agenda two weeks from today for the actual Title 41 hearing, or case.
Okay.
So, everything is, looks pretty good as far as the submission.
Is the two-inch line adequate to?
For a lift station?
No, no, the two-inch line is strictly there for the lift station, for, Andy said to flush it out, or whatever it may need be on that. The building will need a six-inch service, I believe it is.
Well, I think, yeah, that's usual, but I just didn't know if the flushing going up is two.
Yeah, the two-inch line, the two-inch line, in all likelihood, if that southern lot ever gets developed, will be relocated, in most likelihood, because it's probably going to be running through the lot where the building's going to go, if there's ever a building built there. So, that's what he said, but until we know that, we want to make sure an easement is given on that, and then when somebody comes in to develop that southernmost parcel, at that time, they can relocate that easement, or relocate the line. You know, we just want to bring it to their attention. Whoever buys that, you've got to deal with it. There's a water line running through there that's feeding the city lift station.
Yeah.
And the curb cut, is that under plans? Because we'll want to look at that.
A new map?
The curb cut, again, is, they are wish, requesting to put a new cut through the island that's out there now, and it would be a shared access to both parcels, much like we discussed during the lot split, that it can go to the northernmost parcel, or to the southernmost parcel.
Okay. All right, any other preliminary questions? I appreciate the new and improved map.
New and improved.
Well, it was very hard to figure out what was going on on the previous one, so you're starting with a positive in my direction, anyway. All right, could you go ahead and talk about what you're communicating to us about this?
We need you to.
Yes.
State your name for the record, so people out in TV land know you.
Okay. Ryan Buckley, Buckle Creek Engineer. Basically, we're looking at a, the development for Surge Center, which is an ambulatory surgery center, approximately 12,000 square foot facility on University Estates Lot Number 11. And as we discussed, the water line, we'll go out and verify where these water lines are, and get that taken care of with an easement next time. But we've developed plans. We're proposing a curb cut across University Boulevards, the Center Island, it'd be about halfway up the hill, and a new entrance into the facility, that, on a shared easement with the southern property. The building will sit towards the north of the lot, parking down below. The southern portion of the lot, we have a proposed bio-spray, bio-retention area, to catch all runoff for the parking lots.
Okay.
That will then discharge to the city storm system in the center of University Estates.
Okay, and I.
So visually, you'll, it'll be, the parking lot will be front.
Yes, yes, the building's actually higher. The building sits up about six feet above the lower parking lot, and then there will be handicap access up at the building parking, with stairs from the lower parking lot.
What's the slope of that parking lot, roughly?
The actual parking?
I mean, of that, to go to the upper level.
Eight percent.
Eight percent? Okay.
Yeah, the ramp coming from University Estates up to the building is about eight percent, no less.
It's good you have the handicap up on that level, man.
Yeah.
Do you find any, is there a possibility that there's a bit of a, of a problem with the right turn and visibility, or am I just totally haywire here, because of the hill?
Actually, it'll be elevated, there's a, there's a big ditch out there in front at University Estates Boulevard, and the slope actually starts back a little ways, so there should not be visibility. We're actually coming down out of the Surge Center, down to University Estates.
But what about a right turn out the main entrance?
You mean, onto 682, or no?
No, onto University Estates Boulevard. Did you just answer that question? And I was, I was only.
I think, I think it's adequate.
I just wonder if, every time I see topo lines, they're probably a foot apart, but that close together, I get nervous.
Yeah, those are one-foot line.
One-foot line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's about a 10% grade coming down that approach apron, so you'll be elevated to see for site distance.
All right.
Did you say an ambulatory surgical center? So, you anticipate having response vehicles in there?
No, no, it's actually, yeah, there is no over.
Ambulatory means you're.
I can, I get that, I'm just checking on that.
How soon could you, that's a question.
They told me ambulatory, and we're thinking ambulance and stuff, but no, it's not actually, it's same day release.
But they do want to be able to turn in, turn left into this facility, that's where the cut at the median.
The northern curb cut, as it is, the property line hits about midway in that curb, existing curb cut, and you'd actually have to turn south, and then into the facility. You'd have to do a U-turn to get into the facility, from that curb cut to the north.
You're talking about the one to reserve on the falls? Okay.
On the falls either.
Isn't that what it calls?
I don't know. They both have different names.
Actually, have falls.
What is it?
Falls.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, looking at the parking, the way it's put together there, I assume that's like employee parking in the back portion?
Yeah, yeah, we're assuming employee and doctor parking back, kind of in the service area.
Okay.
And then up top on the western side of the lot, and then it would be patient parking in front of the building, basically.
Now, I'm looking at this, page four, it says, "proposed temporary construction entrance." So, that's, that stippled part in the entrance there, is that just?
That's just for erosion control.
I see.
Part of our stormwater requirements.
Okay, I see, I was just wondering what it was.
It's a temporary.
Okay.
Entrance.
But really, it's, it's a permanent entrance.
Yeah, it'll be where the permanent is.
Okay.
It's a temporary thing, the EPA requires a.
Okay, no problem, I was just trying to figure out why it was stippled. Great.
Why don't you, just trying to see, the open space zoning is just the strip in the front of that.
Oh, that's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, that section right.
Here.
Here, right here.
I wanted to ask about that, because it looks like a lot, you know, I could see directly, you know.
No, it's not like that.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, I can see it.
I thought that platted area behind it, which was Altamont Road, is, is that gone? I'm looking at page five.
I probably said five, yeah. Where does the cul-de-sac go out? It doesn't, right?
It's not there.
It's not there, as far as I know.
It's platted, but it's not there.
It's farther to, yeah, north of this.
Could we, would it be vacated then, when you do this?
That was a requirement that Fire Chief wanted in, was access, but I wouldn't want to drive a fire truck up there right now.
Access from this site up to there is very steep. The back of this site gets very.
Well, it's like this, right?
Yeah, the back of this site's very steep to get up to the cul, the platted cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Look at the lines on number two, they start to just climb straight up there.
That's nice. Wonder what this can be like in the summertime.
Like in the storm, we'll have to, of course, review that, near Stormwater, it's pretty active.
Yep.
Why is this up to the stairs?
And we are proposing the biotreatment of the stormwater.
Because of the steepness?
Yeah. If you remember kind of this.
And treatment, we'll also have to review this as well.
Yeah. Then, like I said, this point is, on open communication today, we'll have to get the sign out there tomorrow, start the Title 41 review process, come back in two weeks for that.
But I suspect.
They get that approval, and it's State Building Department, get their permit for that, and then they come back to me, and at that time, they'll have stormwater management and the use, and the curb cut and all that.
They do want to look at possibly site development before the building?
I, I'm aware of that.
Sorry?
Yeah, I told them I didn't. Where they can start, before they have the state permit, they would like to go ahead and start doing their soil erosion controls, and putting, engrading, moving dirt around, and I think we can work with them on that. So, because they can get the stormwater management permit from us prior to the use permit, and that would be no problem.
Okay, there's a neighborhood association up there, isn't there? Have they been consulted, or appraised and apprised?
I, I don't know.
Talk for most. Well, you're going to have a Title 41 sign up there, so that's when you're going to get your feedback. You put a sign up there saying.
It'll be up there tomorrow, at the latest.
They'll be, they'll be calling.
Are you trying, are you bringing them back as well in two weeks?
This project?
Correct.
This is.
If he has the application today, from the preliminary review that we've already been given, and all the stuff, it looks like it's in compliance from everything.
Matt Geisler said they were going to be delighted, but I just thought I'd like to hear they weren't delighted.
Where, I mean, Paul, I know you went to AMAT last night, I wasn't able to attend, but one of our endeavors that we've kind of been tasked with is how do we encourage art in private projects? I don't.
We're not sure yet.
We're still not sure.
Don't worry.
Sort of a green and pink.
Well, oftentimes, like in this facility, and as, the other one was referenced was a hotel, art is going to be in that building, it's, you know, they're going to have pictures of some, some sort.
Now, we can just contract some from the PDAs to do. Is there, I'm looking at the handicap parking, I think that's probably by required, but are you accessing that?
It requires four, or three, actually, and we actually have six.
I figured you'd be needing that.
Yeah, there's a physical therapy in there, so we added more, more handicaps.
My personal experiences, then, there's not one. I mean, we are definitely temporarily able-bodied.
Hands, well, hands.
Yeah. It's nice they have a covered main entry, there we go. And the stippled ones are going, is going to be removed, right?
No.
No?
Oh, what are you talking about there?
The stippled, no, it's not.
Now, that's.
It's just going to be, it's just there. Segmented.
It's just there, yeah, yeah.
I don't fully understand this shared access. Is it, because you're making the width of the curb cut, or onto the other property, that that allows the access to the center property?
Yeah, the actual property line's right down the center of the road, between the two lots.
That's what it looks like, is it?
And then there's a 25-foot easement on each side.
I thought that was a pretty good way to do it.
Okay.
Only one entrance.
For access.
Yeah.
And I suppose that's a sign location, the little dot in there?
That's probably an existing light pole.
A directional sign, but there's a real, PR sign is up on top of the hill, right? The Noel? There? Oops, wait, right there.
Ryan, that access easement, I'm so glad you said that, Andy would like that to be an access and utility.
And utility?
Yeah.
Okay.
What does PR stand for on that sign?
Proposed.
Proposed, proposed sign. Okay, thank you. Got it, got it.
No, proposed relations, huh?
Do you run the numbers at all, to see if any variances are needed here?
I have not yet.
Okay.
But when we had our preliminary meeting, we did check the parking spaces, and so on and so forth, setbacks, it, it looks pretty, pretty simple, looks like everything's okay.
I see you have a bike rack here, always making Aston Spock bike rack.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo. I like the, I like the design that they put out there, but this would be something more massive, I suspect. So, I'm looking at the sanitary, no, I can't, I'm trying to find the sanitary on page two.
Number one, page two.
Is that where it is? I see storm.
Sanitary's in the northeast corner of the building.
Oh, okay.
There's an existing manhole in the University Estates right away.
Oh, I see, right there, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's full.
We're coming direct to that.
Okay, great. And the water's in, it's right next to it.
Yeah, and that water, we're going to have to revise, we're going to bring an eight-inch tap back down to the property line, and then put an easement for the two-inch.
From the stand pipe?
Well, there's an existing hydrant up here, there's an existing eight-inch on the side of University Estates that taps into it.
Okay.
So, we will tap into that and come south.
Eight-inch line, good.
Built to last.
And this mythical two-inch line, is it shown on the plans at all?
I don't know where it is.
No, we, I don't know.
And I found out about it at 4:15 last night, so.
We'll find it.
Overtime.
It's, he doesn't get overtime.
I know, I know, I remember when we did that.
I know, I'm just joking.
Can they locate that with a magnet? Is it metal?
It has a tracer wire on it.
They know where it's at.
Oh, then, okay.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I envision.
Yeah, it just hasn't been located yet, so, I mean, in the field, so, they should know where it is.
They should know where it is, okay. Sometimes they're as built around here as you know.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Waterline, Nancy, finally with a stick.
People really do that.
I know.
It actually works.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Why do we have two different water service lines?
What's that?
Why do you have two different water service lines?
We're bringing six-inch into the proposed hydrant in the front there, and then four-inch into the building.
Fire suppression.
So, he's coming out from here.
Yeah, currently, that shows the existing there, we'll bring an eight-inch new line down, tap with it, probably bring an eight-inch over to the fire hydrant, since we have eight-inch, and then a four-inch up to service the building.
Is this a singular?
Single floor, yes. We have a proposed rendering of the.
Do you have this rented? Is it rented? I'm not going to ask you who, I just mentioned.[1588.82]
You mean building up to spec? I don't know if any of your things are specific to spec.
Search Center is a, they're a national kind of chain.
Oh.
But they partner with local doctors.
Okay.
Okay.
It's my understanding of the company.
Search Center is a chain?
It's kind of a chain, yeah. It's a, they partner with local doctors and take care of the design and everything, getting it up and running, but it's actually local doctors that have a majority stake in the project.
So, it gives them a facility. Okay.
It's like palm trees, doesn't it?
That's one story?
Is that one story, yes?
Yeah, it's one story.
High roof, that's okay.
It kind of looks like Athens station.
Like used to brick.
I have no complaints with the design.
We like brick in Athens.
We'd like to see those tree stuff.
Yeah.
Funny, we just had the same thing when they showed us the information.
The architect's actually out of Arizona, so we're not-
Oh.
They may be palm trees, so.
Poor guy doesn't know what trees look like.
Yeah, we're getting lined up.
Could you be risked, though? Any other questions on this preliminary communication? Because I've already-
Let it move ahead, I guess.
Here's your question, Matt.
Okay.
Is there anything else we should be talking about?
Not as of yet, and if there is, we'll bring it to attention at the title 41 meeting, but-
Should we save these for next time?
Probably so.
We've gone through, kind of ahead of the game. Ryan's met with Andy and I and Paul already, and when he came in, you know, came in with detailed drawings already, where most times we just get schematic. So, much easier for us.
Okay, one thing, if you put the notice, Title 41 notice up, because you're probably gonna get a lot of questions. Everybody's gonna drive past and ask, so you best get, sometimes pack it together at least. Yeah, we could refer to-
I wanted to wait until this meeting was official.
No, I understand, yeah.
We'd like to hear if they have anything.
Because you'll have two, really, you have two neighborhood associations. One is the townhouses up there, I think, and the other one is the general one, and they'll probably both be asking questions.
You know, I don't know the full status of the other one.
Yeah. Well, you do something like this, and it'll revive itself.
Right.
Okay, so, it looks like we're good for the next step.
Yep, thank you.
Hang tight till we're done, if you can, or do you have the application?
Our next communication is 10 South Green.
Thanks, Ryan.
Rivergate Apartments Title 41 Communication. One of you guys speaking?
Oh, no, wait a minute, we have to ask John.
Well, this is kind of like lead into my report from the director, because I all have. Last Tuesday night, we had a board of zoning appeals meeting for the Rivergate project. They were requesting a variance of block coverage only at 77.5% versus 60%.
77.5%?
77.5%.
Okay, 77.5%.
And they did receive that variance, five to zero. They, they went to the BZA months ago and had, basically what they did is they took the floor off of the original proposal. So, now it's a 232-bed unit located at the location of the existing-
New Life Assembly.
New Life Assembly, church, and they've received their variances, so they're here to do a presentation to you today for an open communication on the project, and then, you know, the ball be in your court as to when they actually come in to do some of it for the Title 41.
Could you summarize what the variance was for lot coverage? Anything else?
This past time was for 77.5%, where the maximum allowed is 60.
All right, so the lot coverage, but anything else?
Nothing else.
Parking was obtained.
Parking was, yep, they've had all the-
By virtue of the-
Now, within, one of the things they will talk to you about is they are putting in bio-retention. They are putting in impervious pavement. They are putting in some parking areas that are pavers. Although, what that did is that reduced the number from 77.5% down to 59 or 60%, but I still counted it as impervious, because who's to say someday somebody'll come in and pave over it? So, I didn't give them credit for that, and therefore, you know, they, they still are at 77.5%. And, but, but by doing this other, since they feel that those areas won't be occupied 100% of the time for parking, that they're wishing to move forward with some paver parking, et cetera, to help out on the aesthetics of the site and green of the site.
Okay.
Any questions before we start or invite them forward?
I remember there was some discussion about frontage on this, whether it had a gizmo frontage and easements.
Glad you said that. The, currently, the front of the building, the church, is considered South Green Drive. As you just read, it's 10 South Green. They have, they, they're also the owners of River Park and River Towers, uh, what's the name of the other?
River's Edge.
River's Edge.
River's Edge.
River Park and River's Edge, right next to them, and there's, there was one street called Community Way that goes through there that has one Community Way, or Community Drive, and it's one building out of their existing project. The street running in front of the church is called South Green Drive. Well, obviously, South Green's being extended up the middle right now, so that's gonna be South Green Drive. So, we've got a road in front of this church that, which will be in front of their new building that's gonna have to be renamed. So, whether we extend community, call it all Community Drive, or we come up with a new name, then we'll worry about that as we move forward, but the, it's easy to say that 10 South Green will not be the address of this project, because South Green will no longer be running in front of this project. If you were to look at a map, South Green Drive actually comes up, loops around in front of the church, and goes out through the parking lot to Stewart. And so, what we're trying to do, and we're working with them right now, and Andy, is the piece going from, the road going from Stewart to South Green will be renamed to whatever it may be, or called Community Drive, and we're trying to, they're, they're in the process of getting all the easements from the university to do so.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't front on a public road if it's on South Green Drive.
Because South Green's not ours, is it?
Well, it's all, it's all the same ownership, though.
Well, I see what you're saying, so they, they're actually fronting out on Stewart.
The campus as a whole fronts, if you look at all those buildings, it's one campus, the River's Edge, River Park, and the new building.
They have access directly to Stewart?
Yes.
From McKinley.
Right.
To McKinley.
Oh, dear. Well, this is complicated. Somebody else will have to handle it. I'm gonna pass this on to-
Stewart's closer to Uptown.
Mr. Semester Summer. Well, I was just gonna have those guys come up and talk, and he can-
They're gonna hand you a nice little packet that they put together.
Okay.
But they only have three of them, so.
We have a little technical mix-up, because we brought three along, so.
That's okay, we can share.
Couple of you can share.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, look at it. Fancy, fancy.
Fancy, that's, okay. Well, we got a red pen, we'll scroll all over it. Being academics here again.
You might also, this is a supplemental letter that we won't go through today, but you might find of interest. This is a letter that's supplemental application to-
The BZA.
Okay, good. Okay.
If Shark could, like, make copies and send it out to us, so that we-
Or we get this one right here?
No, that's okay. You've got, we only have three, so we will share. Do you want to share? I can share with RJ here.
Okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can share. All right.
And we'll get a copy to Charlie.
I'm a lawyer from a Kephart Fisher up in Columbus, 207 North Fourth Street, Columbus 43215. Also have with me today Dave Anderson, who's part of the ownership group. He's also from Columbus, Ohio. Once again, my apologies that we ended up with three, not four of those brochures. What you're looking at is the exact package that we presented to BZA last week, as Mr. Paskey said. I also thought you might find of interest that supplemental letter that I attached. What I didn't attach, I didn't attach all the discussion of variances, as Mr. Paskey said, those were granted, but we did, we've been before BZA twice. The second time, we did get a 5-0 affirmative vote for one variance on lot coverage. We accomplished that principally by reducing one story from the building. What you have, the proposed project is a three-story student housing project. It's built with what's known as podium-style construction. That area, as you well know, I'm sure is in the floodplain down there. And so, the construction technique we will use is we will basically build the building up on piers. We will retain the floodplain area to park cars underneath the building, and that's all shown in the shows we gave you. And there'll be three stories of student living. Total of 70 units that has 232 beds will house 232 students in that building. You will also see in the materials, the floor plan, this is a highly amenitized building. You'll notice that over top of the podium of the parking, there is a pool deck with some other outdoor areas around it. The building also has a workout facility, a theater, a coffee bar, the sorts of amenities that we find that students today want in the housing options they choose. Mr. Paskey mentioned this development group is not new to Athens. They acquired both the River Park and River's Edge projects about three years ago. During, since that time period, they've put about a million and a half dollars in improvements in those properties. And we think important to the city, they've engaged in a very strong policy to alleviate the party image down in that area of the city. And we explain in that supplemental letter some of the things they've done to accomplish that. So, they have, we think, not only benefited the student living environment down there, but benefited the city as a whole by doing away with the party image and the police runs that are, that come along with that sort of conduct, and they are committed to that. They are, they do have onsite management that's company-owned, so unlike, unlike a lot of student housing developers, they're not hiring an outside management company. They self-manage their properties. They have onsite management here. Dave Anderson from Columbus comes down once or twice a week, so there is extreme degree of hands-on management of the company. Also explaining in that cover letter to you that they are well-versed and experienced in student housing. They own units all over the country. They're the largest landlords on a couple of different university campuses around the United States. Have huge holdings at Ohio State University, at University of Arizona, at Texas Tech, the A&amp;M, and now Texas Tech. So, they are, this is a, they are not what's known in the student housing and the real estate business generally, and what I know you sometimes see here in Athens, they're not what's known as flippers. They don't build these and sell them. They have a portfolio of these that they own. That is their long-term business plan, to continue to develop their portfolio of student housing and own it and develop it for their own account. The River Park opportunity came along about a year ago when they had the opportunity to buy the church facility down there. They already, having already owned the River Park and River's Edge facilities next door, they thought it made inland sense to acquire this property and move forward with the development you're seeing today. They have closed on the property. They do own the property. So, this is the first step in our Title 41 application to you. You'll see the various renderings in there. I think Mr. Paskey did a great job of explaining to you how we structured the lot coverage variance. What we did was while your, while your zoning code does not permit you to treat pervious surfaces as counting towards the green space on a project, notwithstanding that fact, we agreed, you'll notice in that one drawing, there's a significant amount of pervious pavement, in other words, pavement that water can drain through, but also in the northern boundary of the property, where it abuts the River's Edge property, we put down what's known as grasscrete, which is a grass paver that grass grows up through. We have three years of experience in terms of our parking. In fact, Mr. Anderson and I just drove by the project today. An awful lot of blank parking spaces down there. And our theory is that we want to help the city any way we can in terms of assisting in achieving the three principles from your lot coverage ratio requirement. And there were clearly three purposes. We went back and studied that. They were green space. Can't quite get there with that on yet, but they were also stormwater management, and they were also respecting and appreciating Tree City USA status. So, what we were able to offer through the plan that we've committed to, so it's now law with respect to this project through our BZA approval, is we will satisfy two out of those three criteria in that with a lot of the pervious surface we have, we will allow for stormwater management to be retained on site and assist in your stormwater management policies. And the other commitment we made to planning commission was, while we don't have a lot of green space on this site, you can see from the drawings, we have a lot of trees. The whole perimeter of the site is treed, which is not often accomplished in developments. Because of the urban setting of this project and the way we've designed it, we can tree the entire perimeter of the site. We committed to your planning commission, and it's a part of our approval, excuse me, your BZA, and it's a part of our approvals, that we will increase the size of the caliper of every tree we plant. From, your actual code requires only one and a half, we're gonna increase those to four inches of caliper. And there's some drawings in there that show you what that means in terms of size at install and size at 10 years. So, we were trying to assist the city in its Tree City USA achievement by offering you a lot of trees and a lot of big trees that will green this site and help green the city of Athens that much sooner than small, one and a half or two-inch caliber trees. It would be planned, it would take years before it ever have any effect. You'll see in one of the drawings, it shows the difference between a two-inch caliber tree and a four-inch caliber tree with a man standing next to it or a person. You'll see how much higher it is. You'll see how much more bouncy a set tree is. I think that's all I have to share with you about the proposal. Like I say, there's a lot, there's probably more material in there than you need. There's a lot of the economic data about the impact on this project to the city of Athens. As you know, this would be a site that has been tax-exempt for years, meaning no taxes have been paid to any authority because of the church's location there. This does bring on the tax rolls, about $300,000 of new taxes to the city and its school district and its fire and all the other commensurate levels, commensurate levies in the city of Athens. Happy to answer questions, Mike.
So, we do find that onsite management has a significant impact on the properties in terms of student housing, and we greatly appreciate that.
How many jobs do you think it will create?
It's in the brochure there. I think it's, you know, it's in the one page.
It's right there.
Sorry, we're down to three brochures, and I had to give them all to you, so.
Oh, that's okay. I wasn't trying to, construction jobs, one thing.
You have a near-term and a long-term economic impact. Is the others the sheets you're referring?
I was curious what it would take to keep-
Right now, Dave, what's your onsite management?
We'll have four additional for the Rivergate project. Right now, about in the River Park and River's Edge, we have 22.
Okay, maintenance and-
Maintenance, leasing.
Student life, res life, whatever that means in an apartment. Okay.
So, a couple things. 232 beds, 70 units, so most of them are like four units and twos, is that what I'm seeing? What's the mixed stock plan?
Mostly twos and threes.
The majority are actually threes and fours, 21% twos. For 40% fours.
Okay.
There are mainly threes. We have no ones.
Okay, I didn't think so, I was just wondering.
They're all bed depth parity, meaning that each bed has its own boundary.
Including the tub.
Okay.
It's amazing. High-quality student housing, no doubt. Do you know what I lived in when I came? Don't tell me. I don't know how they afford it.
Two other questions come to mind. One is, I see you have a coffee shop, et cetera, et cetera. So, you have actually, you're gonna have to have supplies coming in regularly to have, I was looking for a truck entrance or delivery site.
It actually comes via mail. We just, I literally buy that through, there's collegiate supply companies that send it directly through over email.
Okay.
It's like charter schools. Was this where the tiki bar was originally proposed, or was that a different apartment complex?
That was at River Lakeview, whatever those are called, the River Park Towers.
A tiki bar?
But that was removed, I believe.
That was before, yeah.
Yeah, it was before.
It was turned on after my company.
No, Mike Noel was talking about that about two years ago. Is that right, Paul? Mike Noel, Mike Noel made a proposal on that about two or three years ago.
That's what my understanding, but I think you wound up calling-
You mean with the pool?
Yeah.
Yes.
On the adjacent property.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Same ownership?
Same ownership, yes.
Okay. The other one, you talk about grass pavers, you know, porous, we're right next to a river. Do you have any concerns about river infusing the other direction? I mean, we're looking drains going this way, but in a high-river situation, would you get seepage coming up from below? Is that something we have to worry about? I know the soil around here is not terribly permeable, so I'm not really that worried, but I just wonder if it's a consideration. No?
He looks perplexed.
My answer is, I'm sure they're gonna probably be doing some geotechnical stuff, so that'll enter-
Make sure it does go down.
And there's an install aspect to that.
Yeah.
To the extent you have soil that's unstable, you'd probably put up agri base, I would think, below, and then set your pavers and then plant your grass. I mean, it's, I think there's a way to stabilize that soil for now.
Okay. Again, the reason I mention it, because technically, that's all riverbed, and, you know, one story is okay, and all the, all the buildings that are there, but I know, you know, I know the discussion when the NCR was there, they were having to put caissons all the way down to the bedrock there.
Well, I agree.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Paskey's right. There's gonna be a lot of, there's been a lot of soil work done and a lot more to be done, because to drill these caissons, we gotta go pretty deep to stabilize that podium for that.
Yeah.
It's very expensive. It adds about a million-plus dollars to the cost of this building, to put all those caissons in there.
Okay. I just was asking, that's all. No big deal.
Are there any questions?
I, I'm very curious and interested in participating in the conversation about the roadway.
I'm sure.
So, but right now, they have their own prop access, because the entire complex is owned by one entity and can access to McKinley.
That has been a requirement that we have put forth to them, and they're working with the university right now on easements. I don't know how that road, if Andy and I talked about it, who is ownership of the road in front of the church in the building right now. If you pull it up on the owner's site, it's-
You're talking about South Green Drive?
Yeah, yes.
So, you?
We're not quite sure.
Okay.
We've dealt with the university before, because we had to get all new easements when we bought River Park and River's Edge a couple of years ago. And so, we're working with the university council's office right now to renew the easement along what we currently call South Green Drive in front of the church, and also easements up along the new extension north. And that's all in process with the university council's office, legal council's office.
Okay.
Other questions?
Did you want to name it? Is that what you're saying, service safety?
I think she wants to make sure it works.
That's why, that's why I was asking.
It's the same number, so I can find my badge.
No, there's no page numbers starting to.
Suppose the Stewart Street extension, it goes by Morton, where they want to make pedestrian. Does that go up to Jeff?
So, you on that part, going back in visiting. If you look at a map, Stewart Street kind of has, there's two Stewart Streets in essence. It continues on straight down, and then the one that loops back in through the buildings that you're talking about.
So, where does the city consider their ownership ends?
They say it's like halfway through the arch there at Washington. Is it Washington Hall that has the water?
Washington Hall, yeah.
That's what they tell me.
Right, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, you just, you said-
Well, you're beginning of halfway through that arch coming and heading back, no?
Well, that's good for fires.
One of the things we're, we're asking, and I discussed- One of the things we're, we're asking, and I discussed that with them after the BZA meeting last week, is that they also own the parking lot that South Green, I guess technically ends into, that we're saying, well, if we can go through your lot and extend what is old South Green into Stewart.
Straight shot.
Straight shot. So basically, we're making a square from Stewart to this new road, wherever we end up calling it, to the South Green Extension to Mill, becoming a square for emergency services and utilities.
Will it be used as a shortcut?
Well, the only reason right now, we're just trying to clear up, is the emergency vehicles getting onto this road in front of, for sake of argument, we'll call it old South Green, which is our current South Green, to get on to.
Old new.
Yeah, to get on to old, the current South Green.
And actually, I have had this conversation, is that how you say, would like to straighten it out? Because you know how you have to, I don't know what page it is, do that little zigzag to get.
Right. And then they currently have water lines that are going through the property that feed different buildings, and to get to River's Edge, you got to go through River Park, and I don't believe there's an easement for that, or we don't know, they're going to research. We're going to get all this cleaned up, of that whole project down there, and I have spoke with them, and they're willing to work with us on that. Just, just get everything cleaned up down there, too. So when you're driving through that area, you're not all of a sudden wandering through apartments and not knowing where you're at, hold them and try to clean that all up.
So John, what's the motivation for taking the new McKinley Avenue off the railroad bed and running it up to Stewart Street?
I bet there might be some private ownership issues right there.
Well, I think the Islamic Center is there and a few others, but.
I guess I don't know what.
You're talking about straightening it, straightening it out, I guess I see it as a.
I think they, I don't know. This right here, this road right here, this parking lot is owned by them. So going through that to Stewart.
But she's asking.
Why don't they go there?
This is all right, yeah. I mean, that's, and this McKinley is actually, I don't know the answer to that. What we're trying to do is create this square here.
But what's, what I think might, might happen is that there might end up being, well, you know, East Union Street is probably a decent crossing, it's always been there, but this is going to be affected, I think, more than you imagine.
No, no roundabout there. I think one may end up.
You're absolutely right that someday, that this, as this gets, because where are they?
Well, in an earlier time, it was, it was the main road. It was going to go all the wrong way.
And it still may be, but either way, we're, that that comes through to here, we still want to clear.
And they've incorporated Ohio University's.
Well, we just got our BZA approval last week. So we've got to do full engineering plans and provide a full Title Forty-One application to you, which, given the size and scope of this project, is probably a couple of months' time. Our goal is to, we've given the church occupancy to the end of the year. The goal would be, we offered it to the fire department for training, not to burn it down, but to train in it.
Shore it up and play with it.
Right, and the goal, the goal is to do demolition at the end of the year, early January, and be under construction in weather committee, and probably early spring next year. Student housing is all geared by being, if you don't hit it right, you lose a whole year, and you know, you've heard this before. So it's all, all this is planned to get it started in time to get it done, in time to get it leased to begin this year.
So you'd like to be ready for business by fall?
May of, May of 2016.
Would be, well, movements for August of 2016.
So you'd be pre-leasing in May, so you could still be doing some finish up, but you'd have occupancy and beginning of school year 2016, right?
I thought that leases went May to May out there now.
Yeah, and they're, they're booking leases right now for next year, so.
They are booking leases right now. There is, the first session starts in May, our leases actually run August to July.
I didn't know.
So did you resolve how you want to see the traffic flow, what you think?
No, I'm just concerned about the, I mean, I think.
She's talking about the future concepts that they've incorporated that Ohio University has even put out there about the pedestrian.
Great, I don't have any problem, I mean, they have, they're doing it, okay, but.
Only problem we have is, I assume you know that when you deal with Ohio University, that means you deal with the state of Ohio Department of Administrative Services, so these easements take a long time to get.
They sure do.
And when we, when we went to them to correct the easement on South Green Drive, which somehow the church forgot about over the year, nobody has a legal description of it, so we have, so the university said, well, can't you get one? So we've got engineers out there doing our own surveying to create a survey for the bed of South Green, the current old South Green Drive, whatever we're calling it, before we even move forward, and then they have agreed to let us use the easements going up. That will actually be a sub-easement, because you know, that's the conservancy property, East of us, so the conservancy has given the university an easement to build new South Green Drive, and we have to have a sub-easement off that, plus curb cuts off that to build our project. So there's some technical hoops you have to jump through.
Yeah, I just, the only question is the existing Stewart Street. The impact on existing Stewart Street, which isn't an easement. And by punching through there, it's, it's neither here nor there at this point, you can take this and talk to anybody about it. Any other questions while we're having this initial communication? When would you assume they're going to bring this back?
I think, John, I think it's going to be a few months, by the time we get full engineering and architecture in place to bring in a full Title Forty-One application.
No.
Are there things that?
Mrs. Variance is.
Andy could get an advance and we'll get a lease look at.
Well, we've already, Andy's already given, he actually put together quite some time back, I don't know, wish lists or checklist of the requirements of whoever bought that property because of, you know, some of the easements and so on and so forth, and they do have a copy of that. So.
Yeah, when this was listed for sale, we started getting a lot of phone calls, and they were from developers from outside the area. And so we, we put together like a short cheat sheet so that we didn't have to keep saying, you should call Andy and then try to wait for Andy to call them back, just so they had some of the basics.
Let me ask you a question. Assuming we do come back in a couple of months, how about timing the process here for planning commission in terms of, you've heard us say, we need to be going by, we need to have everything in place to get going probably end of the year, beginning of next year.
Because of the extensive nature of this project, if you bring it to us and you give us two to three weeks to do our internal review and then give comments back to you, if everything that are from our comments are on the drawings and at the time is presented here, if it's approved that very day with all of our comments, then you're good to move forward at that point.
That's great, we'll keep that in mind as we move forward.
So you're talking about at least a month?
I'd like to have this one, because of the extension nature of the project, at least on my desk for three weeks to review it internally and let the different departments review it.
That's fair. Just, I want to make sure we understood what the timeline was at the back end, we know what it takes to get it filed.
Right.
Just trying to understand how that plays into the overall time. Happy to answer any other questions you might have today.
Let me just discuss.
Can't think of any offhand.
Increase size of the university's student population and how many beds this will go. You'll be right there for them.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, if you're going to have student housing, doesn't make sense to have it down there near campus where they don't have to drive cars, they can walk and ride bikes to campus.
A few are okay in the neighborhood, it's just when they all turn over.
And that was a lot of comment we heard, the first time I went to BZA, when we received the variance in parking. We know what our parking is, we know we park it in the mid-seventies, maybe up to eighty percent, but we also understand that others don't, and so there's a community perception that kids aren't, aren't keeping cars where they live, they're moving them, moving them around up in neighborhoods. We get that, and we dealt with that, and that's why I think we offered what I suggested to the city in our BZA hearing, the best of both worlds, to say, we'll give you a one-for-one parking, but because we don't think, and we think some of your folks, like Mr. Pasky, don't think it's all going to be used, let's green it up as best we can, so when it's not used for parking, we're solving some of these other issues the city has. To us, we saw it as a win-win for everybody to take.
And you're including it in the rent, too, which doesn't happen in all cases. I don't want to put an idea on your head. I just do.
Thanks very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess we're going to move forward here.
To the, thank you for your information, city planner.
I have a few things going on to let you guys know about. On October fifteenth, at six PM, the Environment Sustainability Commission's going to have a public meeting to try to get information to inform a sustainability plan for the city. So there's going to be some brainstorming and some questions about what that might mean to people and how they think that could be enacted and things along that, those lines. Again, that'll be October fifteenth at the Community Center at six PM, that's a Wednesday evening. With respect to the Ridges master planning process, there will be a public workshop on Wednesday, October first, so that's two weeks from yesterday. That'll be at Walter Hall, room one thirty-five, and I believe that is scheduled from five-thirty PM to seven PM, or seven-thirty PM.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty, okay.
Yes, Walter Hall, room one thirty-five. There also, that same day, I think at two o'clock or maybe at one-thirty, will be Schoolly Caldwell will be giving their presentation to the Ridges Advisory Committee, which is the, the community committee, the steering committee for the Ridges Master Plan. I sit on that committee, as well as Charlie Atkins, I serve under the mayor's name, I guess technically. Charlie Atkins, March Stone, Pam Callahan also serve on that with me.
Is Jim Sands on there?
And Jim Sands, thank you, mayor. That'll be, I think it's at one-thirty PM, and I believe that's in Baker Center. I'll have to double check the room and the time, though. The Historic Preservation Committee or Commission, we had a meeting last week, and we're going to try to put together a, a process to get local volunteers to help us do updates and new historic inventories of structures around Athens. We need to update all of our forms, the Uptown District, for example, all of that information is current as of nineteen eighty. So we've got a lot of things that we need to update on there, things that have been changed, things that have been renovations that have happened, all of that information, we're going to try to get that current. It's a pretty big project, obviously, there's a lot of buildings in town. We're going to start with Uptown and College Street, and then move from there and try to find other locations.
Okay.
It was one of the recommendations from.
Yes.
Okay, community service group.
That's correct, right. As well, we're going to be working with the Historical Society, Athens County Historical Society, to try to do, they do some brown bag lunches and things like that, and they have people on the board and volunteers do presentations about historical things around the, the community. We're going to be working with the government channel to put those together as videos so that we can run those on the government channel. One of the requirements from the Historic Preservation Commission and what their task to do is educational outreach. Don't want to reinvent the wheel when the Historical Society's already doing a lot of that, so we thought the better route was to do a partnership with them to try to get the word out on what they're doing a little bit more, too. And the next planning commission meeting, I'll be, I'll be out at a conference in Lexington, Kentucky.
At a planning conference, we're so excited.
Yeah, we'll be doing a presentation on the Essence of Athens Plan for it. It's Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana chapters of the Planning Association have a joint conference every other year.
I saw a document come across my desk about the Essence of Athens, like a implementation scoring sheet coming out of AMAC, I believe.
Yeah, that was, we, AMAC had a meeting last night, John Leffleholz put that together to, I'm not, I haven't even seen actually the scoring, what he did there, but the meeting, we tried to find, prioritize what to focus on, so that we're not being scattershot, and so John distributed that as a way to help people prioritize. What we found, I think, was that the, there is interest in more public art in general. I was told to please figure out how to get those bike racks built, so I'm going to be working with Andy on that in the next, next week or so to talk about how we might be able to do that and try to figure out if we can get some quotes, or if there's industrial design students at Ohio University who might be able to help give us more detailed CAD work. At the meeting last week, somebody said that Hocking College might be able to assist with that, but mites and coulds are just that, I guess. So we're going to figure out how we can do this.
Yeah, I think it's actually, it looked like, I looked at it, and it looked like, almost like a survey sheet, these are the different things we'd like to see, and how do you score that?
Right.
Whether it's the, as you say, the bike racks, or the, the, you know, benches that were kind of interesting, amorphous benches, and, and the Court Street, you know, love alleyways, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. The other thing that we talked about at AMAC, that Paige ended on, is pursuing, there's an organization called the Midwest Sculpture Alliance, I believe, I think that's the name of it. They operate throughout the Midwest, do these very large outdoor sculptural gallery exhibits in communities around the Midwest, where you get about twenty different very large sculptures, and they're put on display throughout your community for up to a year. They're for sale, people can buy them at the end of the sculpture, but they're a very big tourist boom as well. There's not much capital investment that's required from the community. Paige had, one of her neighbors had seen it up in Adrian, Michigan, and she gave us a flyer from it. It was really impressive and a really interesting project, so we had a discussion about whether that was worth pursuing. AMAC seemed like it was a good idea. I agreed with them on that. Paige was hoping to set up a relationship where it could be Nelsonville and Athens working together for this. So you'd have installations around your community, possibly on your bike path, it'd be a path-type system where a trail, and it's a, it's a big tourist draw.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Does the, off the subject there, does the, is that your area of expertise as far as like landscaping on triangles or just near intersections, things of that nature, as far as median strips?
Sightlines and things of that nature?
Yeah, is there like a regulation that you got out to the landscapers when they're planting in the median strips or what have you, as far as the height that plants are supposed to?
I'm not involved with that process, no.
That would, that'd be more code and possibly working with our city engineer. So do you, are you concerned about some heights of their flowers?
Yeah, they get really tall, and it's, I think it's kind of, becomes a traffic obstruction in certain places, like if you go Court Stimson and East State Street, where Procos has his offices, that intersection.
Okay.
There's that little triangle in there that, that when it really proliferates, you know, it does tend to, when you drive at East State, it's tough to see sometimes cars that are coming up from Stimson, especially since there's like a little rise in there.
I think that's why we've got rid of the turn on red. There's no turn on red sign there right now, and I know the landscapers there have repeatedly tried keeping the, you know, the bushes and everything like that low. All the landscaping is pretty low ground stuff. Not that it can't get high enough to obscure. We had that same discussion, what are we doing Columbus Road, what to put down on the median strip there, just for that reason, one of the site issues.
And then would Andy be the person, I'm just going through you as city planner, would this be more of an Andy, Paula thing in terms of, does the city have a plan when we talk about bike paths and whatnot? Art, do we have a plan as far as replacing water sewer lines that are aged? Is there something that's like an ongoing thing there?
I can provide you, Andy presented to the city council this summer, a six-year master plan.
Right.
What is, you cannot tell from it is what prioritization it is, but that indeed is addressing those kind of issues. And in advance of the cyclist that came to town to talk about bike-friendly cities, we also provided him all the different improvements that have been done since whatever institutional memory he had, beginning with the.
Chris nicely had a little bike plan.
Just off the subject stuff, sorry.
I'll send that out, I'll send that out to all planning.
You're asking about, is there a, you said bike path and water lines, and.
Yeah, and I do remember.
That's a part, I'm not sure what you're.
One's infrastructure, one's, the bike paths would be one, as you're talking about the.
Right, I'm talking more of the infrastructure.
The actual water lines and repairing those and sewer lines.
I'll send that out to the commission.
Public works.
It's a PDF, I believe, yeah, or a PowerPoint.
Just inspired by Columbia Avenue, where I guess it's like they would come back again today or something like that on the same spot or whatever, and it's just.
It happens, buddy.
Yeah, so I just.
Oh, the water line break, yeah, yeah.
Shifting, shifting ground. I mean, if it was a flat plain, it's, it's not an issue, but hills and, I mean, the earth moves and the, you know, water line breaks.
It was spectacular. We don't need these sculptures, we can just have those once a week.[1772.12] once a week.
I think Andy would dis...
Just put Hebe next to it.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks.
All right, no, we have no citizens.
Just the, the, as you, the BZA meeting, you know the report on that, when the, when the search was...
Five-zero, what did you?
So, next month, or next meeting, I should say, we'll have the Surge Center Title Forty-One, if everything, which I...
The University of State's one?
Believe. The, that's the University of State's one, yes. I've also been contacted that we will have an open communication on Allen McMillan's project on the Frontier Building at the next meeting.
Oh, Allen McMillan?
So, that's, they wanted behind the parking lot, across from the diner, that, that building back there, that they received their five or six variances from the BZA a couple of months ago.
Okay.
So, they will be coming forward with an open communication. And then also, I want to let everyone know, you've probably read about in the paper, the BP station proposal that got put in the paper before it even come to our office was denied, and they have requested to have a meeting with Paul and I, and we've got to, we've got to get our schedules together, and we'll meet with them and kind of go from there.
Was denied by the zoning board?
I'm sorry?
It was denied, denied by the city.
Oh, okay. I, I know people that are very interested in the question of the balconies. And I hope I don't see a Title Forty-One with the balconies approved by the zoning board without any other public input.
Don't know where they're going yet. The original plans had balconies on it, but they were holding the property, the building back five foot off property, so they were not encroaching over the sidewalk.
So, there's no...
I was thinking of noise and just general neighborhood well-being, and I think that's a very big concern. I've heard it already from people, including Michelle Pappy.
But it would be legal, as a way to...
Well, only if...
This is why we want to...
There are no variances. I, you know, I wouldn't, I would not like the zoning board to give them whatever they have, well, anyway. Doesn't matter what I want.
Again, we haven't even...
We have never met with the developers, the, the documents, I think, were put on John's desk by the architect.
It's just a bridge too far, you know, the, the noise out there. Anyway.
One of the questions I, comes to mind, and I probably should be talking to Andy rather than you guys, is this River Gate, that we're just looking at, River Gate, and of course, the university putting to, to Mill Street, and eventually to Stimson. I think I was on, I was on Stimson earlier today, and, you know, basically I'm following this parade of cars that turn on Stimson to Elliott, Elliott to Mill, and Mill to Stewart, obviously to get into campus and, you know, administration buildings. I imagine that whole dynamic will change once this is in place, and I'm wondering if we should actually try doing some metrics and find out what, what will change there. You know, Stewart's always been an issue about the sidewalks in terms of width and the amount of cars, as well as pedestrian traffic. Some of the shuns to, to the future McKinley or South Green Drive.
Well, I think it's going to be the South Green Drive, I absolutely think that'll be utilized.
Yeah, so, and, and RJ brought up a point, then, if there's a flood condition, is that, is that the first road to go, you know?
Well, that's... But I think that a lot of that traffic, having been in that area quite a bit in the last couple of years, is Jefferson, not Jefferson McCracken, Jefferson. There's a good bit of that, I mean, it doesn't, there isn't that much that goes beyond it.
You mean everybody turns up to the hill?
Yeah, the traffic is going to be there, I think, no matter what. But they might come in the other way, but I don't know.
I would think it's going to be heightened if...
Yes.
They're using, they're going to make a pedestrian mall out of the current, what I call the Stewart Extension through Morton and all that kind of stuff, Tiffin Hall, whatnot. You know, if that is closed down, then, yeah, the only other way up to the north part of town is to, will be to take this new route. And so, I wonder, just from a flood standpoint, you know, if that washes out, or if that's not available, the traffic, obviously, people would have to go to the west side through Eden.
Well, that's assuming that that's not flooded out, too, RJ. If there's a flood situation, we're going to have a lot of roads in this community that are underwater.
Right.
So, a new road that's underwater is a road that doesn't exist today, is the other way to look at it. We'd have that same problem today without that road existing, right?
Is the, is the university plan, as far as the Mill Street Extension, I'm still confused about that. Is that, what they've done is they've just paved that recently. Is that basically what they're going to do, or are they going to widen that as they open up this new road?
Landscaping?
I have the plans for that. I don't know that I have them electronically, but I can...
But I mean, did they widen it at some point?
No, they're, as opposed to being able to maintain a bike lane like we do in our portion of Mill, well, it's also going to be our portion of Mill, they are actually having to put the bike lane outside of the actual roadway.
Which is good.
But, yeah, that's okay, too.
But, you know, within the last ten years, the main ways, they were going to divert the traffic around campus, and it was either going to go on Schaefer Street or on Stewart Street. I mean, that was John Katusky's idea, and I thought it was a pretty good one. You know, so then you have through Uptown, too. So, there is still Schaefer, it's a bear, and then Uptown, also congested.
Right.
And a good number of the people who live in town are north of the river, so I don't know what they're going to do.
And you keep in mind, the university's about to start a master planning process, and so, the parking that exists today on campus may not be what's recommended in that plan, and they might be saying, "Let's move parking to the outskirts, we need more land to build on." Just, we're, you know...
Remind them that time is money. Time spent on a bus is money.
Right.
Okay.
A lot's, a lot's changing on campus, I think.
Having passed through number six and returned back to number five, we'll go on to seven. Announcements and other business, we have a meeting scheduled for October second, and it will include University of State Surgical Center, Title Forty-One, second reading.